Go back and. So first of all, before we start the meeting, I'd like to note the deaths of two more COVID victims that are family members of the town in New Canaan over the weekend. Both B. Watkins' mother in the rec. department, Marietta James, who's a longtime New Canaan resident since 1947, passed away. She was a resident at Wavine Care Center. And our buildings manager, Bill Ossman's mom, passed away over the weekend also. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for these. Marietta was 94, and I'm not exactly sure how old Bill's mother was, but he had had it in a senior facility. So I'll just take a moment to recall all of the victims of this dreadful virus. Thank you. And I also note that Mike Dine wrote a very nice or published a very nice obituary today for Marietta James, which I'd refer you to. With that, I we have to amend the agenda for two reasons. One, we need to add a DPW item for an extension of the road repair contract. And I'd suggest we do that after item nine. And also, because we have a little conflict here with Dr. Lussi's schedule and the farmer's market. I'd like to take the farmer's market first, but it has to be a hard stop at 10 minutes. So Lexi and we'll go first, but we only have 10 minutes to do it. This has gone through a lot of review by EOC, the Health Department. So there's little question, we're going to approve it, but we would like a quick. So with that, I move that we move amend the agenda to add an item after item nine for DPW and bring farmer's market up to be the first item on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So with that, I would ask, I guess, Lexi and I'm sorry, who's?
Patricia.
Patricia, I'm sorry. Good morning, Patricia. Could you do a quick presentation in 10 minutes or less? Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I would like to thank everybody for the support and the action, because we pulled this together within a couple of weeks from zero to 180. We have a farmer's market from not having anything. So I want to really thank the town officials and Jen and the Health Department and the community for pulling through, especially Patricia, for helping us out, because this is a food supply that really needs to come to the community. So we appreciate everybody's efforts. We had started with a we have a drive-through model. We have 300 preregistered customers. Everybody got word out and they signed up immediately from our website. So we will have 300 coming in in 20 car per 20-minute increments between the hours of 10 and 3. All orders are pre-arranged and prepaid for, so there's no transactions onsite. We are very grateful to Robin Bates-Mason for helping Patricia coordinate nine volunteers for that morning to help us direct traffic, in addition to two paid traffic directors onsite that day. So we will be lining cars up in the library parking lot and crossing them over to enter into the farmer's market area. And the vendors are all excited. We're having a meeting tonight to go over their website and any ordering issues and also onsite protocols that they need to follow for that for Saturday morning.
So are there any questions from anybody about this weekend? I think we're pretty much set.
Nick or Kit, do you have any questions?
I do.
So, so, you know, I saw this plan last week. And listen, kudos to you folks. I think it's really well organized, well thought out. It's an elegant plan. And I trust that it will work. Obviously, you know, first time out, there may be a few kinks, you know, that's to be expected, but I think it's a great plan. The one question I have is, you know, the 300 number. I've heard several people say, hey, gee whiz, I think this is a great idea. I want to do it, but I couldn't I couldn't get a time slot because it was sold out. So I guess the question is, if this does work, and I trust that it will, you know, is there the possibility of extending the hours or having an additional day or whatever? Because I really think this is going to be phenomenally successful. And so the question has come to me, hey, I couldn't I couldn't get a spot, you know, is there a chance to do an additional day or more hours or whatever?
Right. So absolutely yes to both of those. And what we'd like to do is have the opportunity to come back after, you know, either in writing or to this meeting and give you an update on how things go every week so that we can adjust as we go, which is either to increase the number of cars that go through based on experience, potentially add another day. But, you know, that might be a bit more work.
Sure.
Right. And ultimately, the other thing we wanted to do is just to, if we had time, is take a minute and you all have the presentations, just to give you a preview of, you know, we're ready to open the market as a walk-through market if and when the town deems that it's appropriate. And we'd still maintain safety regulations. We've got that all laid out here. But, you know, that's the other the other consideration to increase the flow.
You know, ultimately, I think that's the goal. You know, I look at Acme and I look at Walker-Stewartson, your shopping indoors. It seems to me that if you're shopping outdoors, it might be a safer environment. That's just, you know, my initial thought. So I'm certainly in favor of this plan. And I'm also in favor, looking forward to opening this up to a more traditional walk-through, open-air market.
Um. The concern, I don't know if I'm on or not.
You are.
Okay. The concern that I've heard is, okay, so the 300 slots were used up. Is that a rolling 300 slots? Every week there'll be, I don't know who that is, but every week there'll be a new opportunity for new 300 people till that's expanded.
That's right.
Yes. Yes. On our website, we have set up with signup genius. So we've given 20 increments in 20 minutes. So 20 people in 20 minutes, and that can be expanded accordingly. We felt that 20 people for 20 minutes would be a safe first round number to start the market off with, and we can always add on from there.
How do you keep?
So that so the 20 minutes per 20 cars will help regulate the traffic flow.
That's not, that's not actually what I'm concerned about as much as that access to the market be fairly administered. And so I don't know exactly how do you get to be sure that you, when does the signup start?
Signups on first come, first served basis at midnight Sunday prior to the Saturday market. So.
It will start with zero at that point.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One glitch we have, we're trying to still work around is farmers have community-supported agriculture programs where people have already prepaid in January, as early as January, to have their produce ready for them for the farmer's market season for 30 weeks. So we have to figure out how to incorporate them because they've already prepaid for product and are scheduled to come to the market. So we have those things to work out. But we can definitely look into increasing the time that we're at the farmer's market and additional days to help increase access to the farmer's market. And once the governor gives go-ahead for businesses to be open more, we can facilitate more customers at the market through our walk-through model as well. So this is just really temporary. The 300 was just to be able to get the market going so that we had a start. And also, the vendors are more than willing to deliver or ship. So if anybody missed out on their opportunity to come to the market, they can have products delivered direct to them. Some of them don't even charge a delivery fee. So that is an option as well for participants.
And I've also told my friends that if they know somebody who has a slot and they didn't get one, there's nothing that says that you couldn't have two families order for one time slot and one person drives through and picks up for multiple people. So we're going to have a couple people at the check-in to check in everybody as they come in. This is what Westport's done. Although Westport has a walk-up check-in model, not a drive-through like Gilberte's. But in the in our model, we're going to have some two people checking in. People, myself and Robin Bates or Mason are going to start things off. And people will come in and we're going to ask them to have, we'll send everybody, we know who's going to be there because they provided their email. So everybody is going to get an email with their name to ask them to put their name in the window. So if there's three names in the window, vendors know they put those products in the car. So 300 cars is what we're really limiting it to. And hopefully, I expect people in New Canaan will be resourceful and double up. But in respect for your time of your agenda, Kevin, I would ask, at what point could we come back and talk about the walk-through model?
Patricia, our next meeting is two weeks from now, and I'm not sure what date are you thinking of?
Well, it's really going to be driven by the town, by Jen, Ielson, and yourselves as to when you think we're, you know, it would be appropriate. We're ready to do it. And it would still be modified, because it wouldn't, we would still maintain a single path flow through the market.
Right. Our next meeting, our next meeting is the 19th, and by then, we're going to know whether we're proceeding the next day with expanded retail and other outdoor dining. So I think if we can make it for the 19th, we're going to do that.
All right. I appreciate that. And we'll work through Tom and Jen to make sure that it's appropriate at that time. Meanwhile, we'll send you a written report every week of how we're doing, just to give you an update.
Okay. Patricia and Lexi, I want to congratulate you on a great job. And also, I fail to note that Lexi has a 9 o'clock class. That's why we pulled this out to do it first. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you, because I have a final today. So, thank you so much.
If there's no further questions, Kit or Nick, I will move that we approve the plan for the farmer's market. Was that was that Kit moving or seconding?
First.
Okay. Do I have a second, Nick?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? I guess I still have, someone is controlling the screen. I don't see anything.
All right. Let me stop sharing.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Can I, I just want to ask, do you think it's appropriate to have Mike Handler mention this again on maybe the Thursday call to just answer some of these questions that have come up?
Well, again, let's talk to Mike.
Okay.
Okay. Jen's on. Jen, did you want to say anything? I didn't see Jen down there.
No, I just see Patricia asked me to be on just in case.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll move on. Thank you again, Patricia and Lexi.
All right. Thanks very much, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
And quickly, you know, Dr. Lussi also has a schedule issues this morning. So we wanted to take the East Roof Solar and the Roof and the OLA agreement all together. But first, let me go back. I neglected to mention that we will take public comment. I'm not sure we're on 79 yet, but we will take public comment if anyone wishes to comment by email to our BOs distribution@newcanadect.gov email address. And we'll leave the comment period open throughout the meeting. So if we do receive any comments, we'll read them. So with that, I would go back quickly to the minutes of our last meeting. And I would note two things. One, it was a little unclear whether we had included the apple cart at Mead Park in the in the rent relief, and because they were not on the schedule of the, but I would either amend the minutes or vote separately to add the apple cart to that rent relief. And I also wanted to note in particular that there was never really any question about Bankwell. Bankwell has had paid their six-month rent, so there was never any question about Bankwell paying their rent. I didn't want to give that impression. Are there any other comments or corrections on the minutes? Kit, Nick? Okay. Do you want to vote on the on the apple cart? Or do you want to just amend the minutes to reflect the?
I would defer to Tom.
Why don't we vote now? Just do it right now.
Okay, I move we give the same rent relief to apple cart at Mead Park that we give into the other six.
Second.
Less ease. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting.
So moved.
Second. Kit and discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. So let's move on. Now, we've had some a good bit of discussion already about the East School roof. And we're taking this a little out of order to be able to have the Board of Finance function on this next Tuesday, and then the Town Council do a bond resolution the following week. So we want to be prepared to have the Board of Ed commit to the contractor on the roof as soon as that those approvals are obtained. And we had an extensive presentation about the East School roof to the Advisory Committee on Buildings and Infrastructure back in January or February. So I think we're all familiar with the need to do the East School roof. And there's no one less to get the solar project done on East School more than I do. And we're going to also talk about briefly the the desire to do at Saks Middle School, both solar and combined heat and power. And that's why the OLA agreement, engineering agreement, is on the agenda to begin to move forward the CHP aspect of Saks. So with that, Dr. Lussi's here, Joanne Keating's here, a couple of members of the Board of Education are here, Dan Clark is here. I think we need a brief, very brief presentation, Brian, because I think we're already familiar with this.
Great. Then I'll actually, I'll turn it over to Joanne, if that's all right, since it's really the financial aspect as we talk about the contract. Just to say, before I do, to say thank you to Board of Selectmen for having us here this morning. You know, the people are always impressed when I talk to them about everything we're doing with closing and everything going on in town, and the fact that we're continuing our business and continuing to move forward, which is so important to do. So the we know about the importance of the East Roof project. It is something that was delayed a few years ago. So we are glad to see it continuing to move forward, because it is something we feel strongly needs to be done. And we are in a good place as far as the process goes to get everything lined up and be able to get this work started soon. Joanne, you want to talk a little bit about that?
And Brian, you have your team here. So if you need to drop off, feel free to.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you.
And you're muted. Who's controlling the mic? Tom?
Who do we need?
Joanne, Joanne. Okay.
All right. So we went out to bid in January for the East Roof, and we opened up the bids on January 31. And in the bid, we had 120-day period where they had to hold their bids. So we are kind of bumping right up on that deadline through the end of this, the month of May. So it's timely that we are approving it. We received four bids, five bids. Greenwood was the lowest bidder by $89,000 to the next lowest bidder. We worked with Greenwood last year on the South Roof. We were very pleased with their work and we're delighted that they were the lowest bidder, because the quality of the work is very good. We are coming in, or we anticipate to come in, under budget. The budget for this project was $2,200,000. And we currently have a budget of $1 million.
9:27.
9:27. So we're going to be within our budget by a considerable amount of money. We do have contingency in here. We will be having to move HVAC units on the top of the building as we work through the replacement of the roof. And we also have some other things that will come up with regards to potential hotspots and drainage and so forth. So we do feel like this is a very good project that we have going, and we're looking forward to being able to complete it this summer.
Hey, Joanne, what's the line item for project management, $100,000? What does that comprise?
So we have, we have two, we have an owner's rep that is onsite every day for the entire construction project. We had that over at South School. It worked out fantastic. It's a former roofer who was a foreman, so he does know the, you know, this type of work very well. And our architect engineer services that actually prepared the RFP, the spec has vetted it out. They come in regularly. We pay them on an hourly basis. It's not a contract for X amount of dollars. So if we use them for less hours, we pay less. Last year, we came in under budget on this. We expect to probably come in under budget again this year. We finished in eight weeks last year. The weather cooperated quite a bit, so we didn't have as much manpower in terms of weather-related issues.
And you don't expect that the COVID, you don't expect COVID issues to delay the process?
So interesting that you bring that up. We just had a conversation yesterday with Greenwood about that particular topic. And we are going to be adding one clause within the contract with them to deal with COVID-related issues. I mean, the contractor has no control over, you know, mandates from the state or orders from the state. So we have to be flexible in that way. But we're going to put some language in the contract that works for both of us. So we're working on that right now.
Good. And remind me, what was the spend on South School?
So in South School, we actually came in about $400,000 under budget. It's 1.8 million. We had a budget of $2,100,000 and change. So we came in pretty good. We were, I think, $401,000 or $2,000 under budget on that project.
Good.
Kit, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
So we're talking right now about the East School Roof Project. I don't have any questions. And so with that, I would move we approve the East School Roof Project as presented by Joanne. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Now we'll move on to the solar at East School.
Thank you. So with regards to solar, we worked with Davis Hill, who was a successful bidder last year on the South project. They did an excellent job, and they were the low bidder last year. A few things have changed since last year. Last year, we had a 4-cent PPA with South. This is a 4.5-cent PPA at East. So there's a difference of a half a cent. And it relates to two things. It relates to the fact that the tax credit has decreased from 30% to 26%. So there's a differential of about 4% for the developer. So they're entitled to a tax credit for energy conservation investment. So that's one piece of it. And then the other piece of it is just the location of the building and the production of the system itself. All in all, we felt that we had a very good deal with them. We have a PPA that's already been negotiated with Davis Hill from last year. The work was quality. We were very, very pleased with All Electric, who's the installer for Davis Hill. And we feel positive about going forward with this particular developer and this project.
So you're replicating the South School model at East?
Yes.
So you talk about, when you talk about location, Joanne, so there's a, in terms of solar capabilities, one school is a bit better than the other? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we have shading over at East, especially on one side of the building. We are going to trim it back as far as we can. But a portion of that building is very close to the road. So there's only so much that you could do with the shading there. And then we have a second floor on that building that has that roof provides shading over the lower roof. So it's, the capacity is different on that building. Whereas South was completely flat due South, and the production there is better.
And it's not on 123, which is, I think, to your point, the school butts a busy, you know, highway, essentially.
Right.
Joanne, could you repeat the PPA, et cetera, and maybe convert that into dollars?
So the PPA for East is going to save us overall. So we did an analysis for our board and looked at design and build and own as opposed to the PPA. And it had a net positive cash flow on a 20-year basis to go with the PPA. So we're looking at saving close to half a million dollars over the life of this contract, which is a 20-year contract. And annually, we expect to save, you know, $35,000 to $40,000 in our budget.
Great.
I would also mention that we're looking to, Davis Hill had actually given quotes on both East and doing a project at Saks on the cafeteria roof and also West. And since we've been talking about doing additional town projects with a PPA and not investment of capital, perhaps the wastewater treatment plant, and we've been talking to the YMCA and Wavine Care Center for their IN, we would like to go out with an RFP on those other projects as a package and using the PPA agreement that was negotiated for South School as the PPA we would use. A lot of the costs of these projects are upfront. And once we now we have a template, we we'd like to proceed with that. So first of all, let's go back and mention the East School Roof Project we approved, subject to approval by the other boards, obviously, for the funding. The this solar project, I'd like to approve it on the basis that I will further review the PPA to make sure that we have a PPA that we can go forward with as the template for our future projects. And I haven't done that completely yet. And we're also going to have a discussion next Monday morning with the Advisory Committee on Infrastructure and Buildings to coordinate the power, the solar projects and the CHP projects at Saks and the future project at the high school, and also look closely at whether we ought to perhaps do the CHP at both Saks and the high school as a PPA and not as a capital investment. They are large investments, and you do get a return in six or five, six, seven years. But anyway, so I'd like to approve this, subject to the Advisory Committee reviewing the PPA next Monday and my being satisfied with the agreement as well. Not that I expect any any problem. But I would like to have a template that we are going to shortcut the process for the future projects, both on the town side and the the school side. So is that clear? In terms of, I'd like to say, subject to review by the Advisory Committee next Monday and the First Selectmen being satisfied with the agreement, which I'm.
That's fine with me.
What would happen, and I'm fine with that, but what would happen if you do not approve? Then what happens?
We'd probably bring it back in two weeks and keep, keep on, the solar is not quite on the same trajectory as the roof. The roof is a predicate to the solar. But actually, I was going to ask Joanne, too. Is the roof project going to be started? I believe school's not going to be in session for the rest of the year. Would we start that immediately or wait for the summer for the?
No, we'll start it immediately.
Right. So the solar, the solar has to await the new roof, which ordinarily, we would have thought was August. It may now be perhaps June or July if they start immediately. Well.
If it stops raining. Right.
Yeah. So anyway, I fully, again, I am a huge supporter of solar, and I'm also a huge supporter of using all the natural gas we can we can get converted. And so I'm not looking to slow this project down by any means. And I just want to make sure we have a template to be able to use going forward, because it'll be, it'll be easier for us to move forward quickly with the other projects if we, if the prospective bidders know what our, what our terms are in New Canaan. if we, if the prospective bidders know what our, what our terms are in the Canaan. You know, Davis Hill is essentially a financial partner and it's a very competitive marketplace. And if we put together a portfolio of projects, we likely will get better pricing. And these are 20-year contracts, so we, we need to do as much diligence upfront to get the best deal we can for 20 years. The South School was done at four cents per kilowatt hour. This is four and a half cents, so it's a pretty darn good deal. And, but with the solar projects, we have both the, what are they called? The credits from Eversource that are wasting if we don't get the projects done and also the investment tax credit step down from 30 to 26, as Joanne noted. So we want to move forward quickly.
Yeah, that would be my only caution, Kevin. So sure, the, the PPA that we're using with East is the PPA we used over at South. The, it was pretty carefully negotiated, as you know, as board members know, as the board of selectmen saw that too. So we just want to keep things moving forward so that those Z-Rex don't step down and the. Z-Rex, yeah. And so as long as we can move forward and as you're looking at it, if there's anything we can do to help, just reach out, let me know and we can get on a call.
Yeah, I failed to mention too, we, we have a project that's about to, it's already funded in the wastewater treatment plant to do a CHP unit at the wastewater treatment plant. And we want to, we want to coordinate with the Board of Ed on their planned projects for Saks and high school. This, this is a step-down version of the behemoth we were talking about doing a year ago and pulled back on. So, but it's very, very productive to have us generating electricity with gas. Great saving.
And the advantage at Saks with that is the heat as well, right? So there's, the boiler plant needs some work and the CHP over at Saks will also allow us to recapture that heat and use that. So it's sort of two birds with one stone. Just again, a timing question, just to make sure we get it in place by probably no later than October to be ready to keep those buildings.
So, so the solar project, I move, we approve the agreement with Davis Hill as presented, subject to my satisfaction with the PPA agreement. And I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Hey, Kevin, just while we've got Brian here, and I don't want to keep him, but you, you mentioned, you know, going back or maybe not going back to school. Brian, any, any thoughts on where, where things are with that?
I think we should tune into the governor's press conference today.
I think, I think it's been decided.
Yeah, I think all indications are that way. It's not official until, but yeah, certainly from the commissioner's office, the indications are that we're going to be out. And then anticipating getting some guidance on camps and summer schools and extended school year programs.
Well, yeah, I mean, it makes sense in my mind, so that's good.
So finally, the OLA Consulting Engineers Agreement, which is number six on the agenda. This is to get us going on the proposed CHP project at Saks. And as I said, we're going to be working closely together because we've learned something already with the RFP we put out for the wastewater treatment plant. And we want to keep this moving forward quickly. And OLA is familiar with the, the, the systems and at Saks and therefore is a logical candidate to do this, this engineering work. So, Joanne, do you want to explain a little more further what OLA is about?
Sure. OLA, they did the engineering work on the 1990 addition to the building and also worked on the most recent addition renovation to Saks. So they're very familiar with Saks building. And so we thought it made a lot of sense to bring them in as we have to size our boiler plant and the CHP to accommodate the building. So they will start with the schematic drawings and that's what this contract is for, schematic drawings. And then once we determine how we want to move forward with the actual build-out of the CHP in the boiler plant, we'll be able to convert or move down the road to an RFP. The timing is aggressive, I think. We would like to have an RFP on the street in another three to four weeks. So there's a lot of work to be done, but we do need to get it out on the street so that we can move into June and start with the, the project over the summer. And as Brian said, we do need to have the plant operational for October because we need to heat the building. So we're moving forward. We're working with the town, with Tiger and Joe on the town side. They've been very helpful and we'll continue to coordinate and work together on the projects. As Kevin did mention, we're going to bundle in the solar for the roof on Saks. I don't know about West, that might go out separately. But if we can get a package deal on a PPA for both the CHP and the solar, we'll certainly take a look at those numbers and compare them to the built-to-own model.
Yeah, the, the capital for the Saks project is budgeted for 775 or something?
It is, yes.
And so that's a big number and there's an awful lot of competition for capital. And if we can get a better deal financially, actually, in the case of this, as it was the case with solar, you know, we, we could purchase the solar, solar equipment from the financial partner after 10 years because they've taken their, their, their economics out of it early on. And same thing here, if we, we could do a PPA perhaps on the CHP unit at Saks and then buy it after five or 10 years because most of the economics for the investor is upfront. But anyway, we will look seriously at the, at the PPA versus the invest in the capital. That's what the advisory committee will look at next, next Monday morning. And so if, any further questions, Kit or Nick? This is, this is simply an engineering contract to move this project forward.
Joanne, what is the nature of the so-called reimbursable expenses on top of the contract?
They're marginal. They would be any kind of travel. It would be any kind of drawings that we asked for in excess of what they're going to deliver with the schematic. But they're, they're minimal.
So they'd be minimal and reasonable?
Minimal and reasonable. And this is a not-to-exceed contract. So if they put fewer hours in, we pay less.
Good.
And presuming we would go forward and look at buying this in five or six or 10 years, I, I know it would be very carefully vetted, but do we have other communities done this and is it economical?
So when we did the solar on South, we actually built into the PPA, I believe there were three different years that we could procure and they included that pricing in the bid. So, or in the contract, I should say. So I believe it was like six years, 10 years and 15 years. So we'd have to look at the economics at that time to see if it really made sense.
Yeah, with, with solar and also with, you know, these things go on beyond their expected useful life. So there's a desire to, you know, just always look at it and see if it makes sense to own it down the road. Any further questions?
None here.
If not, I move we approve a contract with OLA Consulting Engineers for 29.5 plus reimbursable expenses for the support in schematic phase design of the combined heat and power at, plan at Saks Middle School. Second? Second? Did I move it? What did I say?
Waiting for you, Kit.
Okay, second?
Discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all Board of Ed folks for being with us this morning and very happy to work together on this project.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Yep, thanks for everything.
Okay. So jumping back to where we were on the agenda. You Board of Ed folks don't really want to stay on for the, you're welcome to. Tax relief for the elderly or disabled, because the town council, this is really the town council's jurisdiction, but we're simply going to do a technical change of the application date, extending it from May 15th to August 15th to be consistent with the 90-day deferrals that the town council approved for town property taxes. Tom, or anybody need to discuss this further? It's just a really, Linda, do you want to? This is just a, simply a timing issue for us.
It's a timing issue. There's nothing really to discuss. I think one of the documents that we ask is part of this process are the, our tax returns per year. And because that's also been delayed, that's one of the other reasons for delaying this as well because the filing date has been extended from April to July, I think. So there's a piece of documentation that details them needing those requirements as well. But it doesn't impact, it doesn't impact our, it doesn't impact our total revenue. As you know, when we, when we set the mill rate, we budget for a certain amount of uncollectible dollars, which include these programs. So delaying, it's just a timing issue. It does not impact the budget at all.
Right.
So effectively, even though normally this would be coming out of the 2020, it's coming out of the general fund. It's the residual for the, for the, it's not actually budgeted for his dollars to be spent. It's, it simply comes out of the general fund to the extent it's claimed as a credit.
Correct.
So it's an unbudgeted expense, but it's authorized under this program. So I move that we approve this extension of the date for applications for tax relief for the elderly or disabled to extend it to August 15th from May 15th. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Good warden, who's doing this, Tiger?
I am. Good morning. So the tree warden went out for his latest bid, 12 separate items. We received three bids, Olmstead being the low at $10,880. The difference between the second and third bidders was 0.4%. So it was only $59 separating the two at $13,725 and $13,784. Bob's confident that the work will be done well. Olmstead Tree's done great work for us in the past and we'd like to recommend the contract for $10,880 for Olmstead Tree.
Questions?
Not here.
Not here.
I move or approve the request from tree warden to enter into a contract with Olmstead Tree and Trump Care for $10,880 for tree pruning and removal at various locations in town. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Highway repairs? Highway department repairs?
Yeah, I'll take this. Bill's unable to attend today. His mom was 85. Mary Lou Osman was 85 years old and passed away in a nursing home. So Bill went out to bid. I wish he was here for this one since he got three bids for you, Kit. But he went out, we got three bids for, this is some work at the highway department. We actually, on a, in a driving rainstorm, which is actually when we want our highway department to be successful and working well and not having to worry about leaks into the building, we get leaking through the metal siding at the highway department specifically over Moses area and the other office areas. So we received three quotes, Alden Bailey being the low at $5,200, Antonelli at $6,850 and then Gold Seal Roofing at $9,200. And we'd like to award the contract to Alden Bailey, a small contingency of $780 for a total of $5,980. They can come out and take care of the work immediately and take care of this issue for us.
This is to correct a water problem?
This is correct of leaking, yeah. It leaks, leaks, the driving rain will leak through the siding and then pouring over the top of Moses and Danny in the dispatch area.
Water, water everywhere.
Unfortunately.
I move we approve. Any further questions?
Not here.
I move we approve, there's a request from DBW to enter into a contract with Alden Bailey for $5,200 plus a contingency of $780 for siding panel flashing repairs at the highway department building. Second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, Tom?
Thank you.
Okay, and then we, the new item we added was the extension of the road repair contract to add two parking lots at Talmadge Hill Station.
Right. So we had originally been looking at bidding this out and doing it in August before the virus hit. Now we've got no commuters in the lot. The contractor himself is actually working on Talmadge Hill through this stretch. He's doing the, the area from Lapham Road down to 106. So we actually, we asked him to come back out and take a look. His numbers are in line with exactly what he had bid for the low bid for the pave 20 local roads project. I did an analysis on the side and our engineering analysis had brought me in at around 109 on one iteration and 120 on the second iteration. So his number is, is, is perfect. He'd like to jump on this work since no one's in the lots. He'd like to come and mill it either tomorrow or Thursday. We recommend the, an extension of the contract to FCB Construction for $106,044.50 with a $16,000 contingency for a total of $122,044.50.
I actually have a question, Tiger. Do we have enough lighting at Talmadge Hill?
It's, it's adequate. We, we are looking at to string a couple of more conduits through there just to see if we can add another light. There's one light that's already struck overhead. We want to put some conduit in the ground so that we can then string it underhead, underground so we, we don't have that overhead anymore. But at present, we haven't received too many complaints about the adequacy of the lighting.
So Tiger, what exactly is the nature, what exactly are they doing at Talmadge?
Sorry, the, I apologize. The, the two lower lots on the eastern side, so the uphill side, the non-platform side are probably the most heavily, you know, two of the most heavily used and they're in the worst shape. So those two, he's completely milling out, taking out all the pavement in its entirety, putting back some additional process base to level it out and get it to drain properly because that's one of its problems, so that it doesn't sheet well. And then place four inches of asphalt back on top of it. So it's basically an entire redo. The base is pretty good, so we don't want to reclaim it. Reclaiming would be adding in everything, pavement and into a mix. We'd rather just take the pavement off. The base seems very, very solid. We just need to do some grading issues on it and then repaint it back. So the bottom two lots will be perfect by the time we're done.
And it, it needs to be done and now's a great time to do it. But let me just throw this out there, kind of devil's advocate and just thinking big picture. Are we as a town confident that we're going to have the same level of commuters going forward in three, three years, five years that we had, you know, three months ago? I'm not sure. I'm just throwing that out there. You know, we were worried about commuter parking. And I got to believe that, I, I don't want to use the word sea change, but I think there's going to be a big change in, in, in the way that people do business in New York City. We've learned how to work from home by necessity. So I just, I think we should think long and hard about the spend that we make going forward on commuter lots. I'm a commuter. I like to do our lots because I, I don't want to, you know, go into a parking lot that's, that's shabby and in disrepair. But I got to tell you, I'm not sure to what level my law firm is going to have the same number of people going schlepping into the city every day on a commuter train. So I just, I just throw that out there.
Nick, my view is we're going to continue to move on the train issues because we, train service is essential to our economy. And also I would note that, Tiger, do you know when this lot was last paved? Because this was the first lot at Talmadge Hill. Mrs. Lapham Lloyd gave this property to us in 1962, six acres. And the, the other side was the only lot that was there. And this is in very bad disrepair. I actually, we've had discussions with our state representatives back in January about possibly acquiring more property there to expand the Talmadge Hill lot because it, it really is a regional station. It's not only for Canaanites. So on the contrary, Nick, I think we're going to remain a commuter town into the 21st century. And we can't, we, we especially need to respect our commuters who have put up with a really bad parking lot here for a long time.
First of all, I'm one of the few commuters in town government, I believe, and have been for 30 years. So I'm in favor of this, okay? That's not my point, Kevin. My point is I think we need to just consider, I, I disagree that things are going to go back to the old normal, okay? We'll still be a commuter town and I still, I still think I'll be going into the city. Will I be going in every day? I don't know. But I, I'm hearing from people in businesses in. But I, I'm hearing from people in businesses in the city that, you know, that there could be long-term changes from the implications of COVID-19. That's my point. So, so if, if, for example, we think about, hey, let's buy more land to make more commuter spots. I think we should think long and hard about that.
Well, I, that would be the state. Now, we wouldn't do it ourselves. But on the other hand, I heard from someone this morning that has 300 traders working in New York right now and they're, they're adding, they're going to 602 weeks. So I think the, the Wall Street community, um, is clearly going to, uh, be an essential part of our economy. And also, um, God love them if they, uh, they get back to work and.
Well, we, we, we certainly want that, but I, I, my, my only point is that I think we need to think big picture um, and the implications of this disease that may come back in the fall. Or maybe we get another disease. I mean, I, you know, you talk to the real estate agents, people are fleeing out of New York City.
And they have to get back in to go to work. Anyway.
Actually, you don't. You can work from home. That's, that's the whole point that people, my God, you know, Zoom.
What, Nick, I agree with you. I think there's going to be a sea change as far as what will happen. But at the end, there's 10 lots at Talmadge Hill, and we're looking at just doing the two closest. The top five, you know, will, you know, and again, we'll take a look at it and see what ridership is in two months, three months, six months, a year kind of thing, and then decide what you want to do. These lower two ones, I, I imagine, I estimate that they were paved sometime in the seventies, the early seventies.
Yeah, those are a mess. They need to be, they, they need to be fixed. No question.
What is the condition relative to the Locust lot?
Um, not as bad as Locust, but, uh, pretty close.
And the square.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I'll wait.
Sorry, we, we are, at present, I have Mike working on a bid package for Locust to, uh, and Locust is a little bit of a different repair, but I have a big package for that lot as well. That, that is a little bit different.
And, and the square footage relative to Locust?
A little smaller, uh, by about half.
Well, and.
3,070 square yards. I'd have to remember what Locust is, but I think Locust is a little bit, is larger by about two times.
And I, I definitely agree that this needs to happen, but I think Nick has a great point. I don't think anybody can know what is going to happen in terms of parking from New Canaan going forward. Because as many people as that trader is hiring, other people are firing. And so, uh, between that and working from home, I, I just don't think we can know.
I agree in the, the, yesterday I was on a call where someone actually asked for additional bike racks in town. So, which is a, a different change as well. That's the first time I've had that request in quite a while, you know.
Well, I'm bullish on Wall Street and New Canaan being a commuter town, so. Let's, um, let's vote on, on keeping in good repair what we do have, and this is in terrible repair. I move we approve the request from DPW for. What are you asking, Tiger?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, $106,000, I believe.
Hundred and six plus.
Hundred and six, oh, 44.50 plus 16,000 for a contingency.
And this is with FGB, which is already in there doing, uh, Talmadge Hill Road, which also, also long overdue. Residents over there have been waiting a long time for, for that road. So that being the case, I move we approve this, uh, extension of the Talmadge, uh, Local Road Number One pave, paving 2020 contract. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye? Okay. Now we move on to, uh, Public Works Week. Tiger?
Yes, usually this is one of my favorite things in the year. I don't know how we'll celebrate it this year. We'll, we'll have to figure out something. Um, I don't really want to bring all my men together into one spot. But nonetheless, May 17th to May 23rd, we're asking for, uh, Public Works Week to be, uh, proclaimed in this, in the town of New Canaan. Uh, this year's National Public Works Week challenges our members and their citizens to think about their communities as a symphony of essential services, working in concert to create a great place to live. Every community has a rhythm, a heartbeat that reflects its essence and tempo of life. So this year is, is the rhythm of public works, I think, that stands to reason or, or it's actually been shown through the, the work of the EOC for the past two months or more. Um, it's a, it's an integral work and it's, it's, it's simply a concert. I think it's, I think we're working very well, very well together.
It's not a concert, it's a symphony.
It's a symphony. Thank you, Nick. It is a symphony where, you know, I would agree with you.
I don't know why we have to bring this to the Board of Selectmen. I can do this myself. Declare the, uh.
I don't know. It's been, it's been a, I think it's a 10 years now. It's been going on 10 years.
We'll make a declaration. Week of May 17th to 23rd is the National Public Works Week in, in the town of New Canaan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, discussion, Nick?
No.
We, uh, we want to thank all of our DPW workers, um, in this time of craziness, uh, in terms of people getting their jobs done and, uh, serving the town in the Canaan so, so well. Um, if you drive around town, um, uh, Public Works keeps this town shining and, and a fabulous, uh, fabulously beautiful community. And, um, I want to thank Tiger and, uh, Mo's and, uh, John Howe and all the, the Public Works, Department employees for terrific work and happy to declare the, uh, week is the National Public Works Week.
Hey, hey, Tiger, um, on the natural gas build out, is, i- is there going to be a change this month based upon the governor's latest, um, proclamations?
Kevin and I have been in discussion with them quite often and we're hoping we're, we're pushing hard for that. Specifically in areas that, that haven't, you know, that, um, have been waiting for their service lines. I spoke to their project manager, uh, at the end of part of last week, and he was pushing hard on his side to get those things done. So we're hoping that.
Is it, is it the, the gas company or is it the gov, the state?
Both. I've heard Pura and I've heard also the read from the gas company that, uh, but I, I think it's more that, um, the new services were not considered essential. Anything on resiliency and, uh, maintenance, meaning replacement of existing lines was considered essential. Anything on a new service, uh, initiative was not considered essential.
Nick, I think the concern is you have to go into people's homes to be, to do, uh, conversions and hookups, so.
But they could do a lot of the build out without going into homes, just ripping up the streets. What, what, you know, could do that now and then, and then time and later, right? I, I just, I'm, I'm.
That was our ask as well, but.
It's just insane. Anyway.
Did I, did I move this or do we vote on this? Where are we?
I don't think there was a vote. I think you started and then I don't think it was finished.
Anyway, I move it and do I have a second?
Second.
Second here.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to move into a budget review, which, um, I guess. So let me just, uh, the, the Board of Finance is going to meet next Tuesday. We've been monitoring our expenditure rate. Uh, Linda's been doing a lot of analysis for the Board of Finance. Uh, there's a natural slowdown, given the less than optimal efficiency um, that people working at home creates, although we're providing all of our, our central services, but there is a bit of a natural slowdown. Um, we've looked at, um, the kinds of things we need to do, and we've looked at our revenue expectations. But, so Linda, why don't you walk us through, um, the slide presentation you created? I gather you're going to give this to the Board of Finance next Tuesday?
Uh, yes. So, so what I wanted to do was to just to kind of give you some context. There's been a lot of, um, presentations and updates. And, um, on Friday, the governor and his finance team kind of presented where the state is. And obviously because we don't operate in a vacuum, so I kind of wanted to start kind of sharing with you the picture statewide, um, and then we'll drill down to the New Canaan level and then see where we are and we'll get specific into capital projects, um, and so forth, some of the discussions and some of the analysis that Kevin just talked about.
Uh, Linda? Are you going, are you planning to share it on the screen?
Yes, I'm getting ready to share my screen now and I hope we have better luck than the last time I tried to do this. Can you see?
Yes.
All right. Oh, perfect. It's going to work. Okay, um, so basically just to start, um, at the state level, um, how has, uh, COVID-19, um, impacted the state? Um, obviously, as you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. Uh, no one has been here before and you keep hearing the same message, well, with everyone that you talk to. Uh, as far as, um, analyzing is really based on data. Um, and it's still early, so the data is now just coming in and we're just now beginning to get an understanding of, of what's really happening and beginning to make some assumptions and trends based, based on those things. Um, but we're making a lot of assumptions of things that are unknown, um, and therefore that creates a challenge in forecasting. They level even here at, at the local level, um, when Kevin and the Board of Finance asked me to do, you know, modeling what the 90-day tax deferral going to do. Um, you, you do the best that you can, but it's really unknown. There's nothing to trend that too. So we make a lot of assumptions and, and guesses, um, and hope that, um, those somewhat help us in decision-making, but I've noticing that having to go back and reevaluate and change some of those assumptions. Um, and then again, the situation evolves rapidly. Um, in some instances, it changes daily. Um, and therefore just to continually keep, uh, being current, uh, you've seen the series of executive orders when they were flowing, uh, we were having one a day almost, or sometimes two a day. Um, and therefore just keeping up with those, not only understanding them, but understanding how they impact us. Um, and so that's just the nature of, of how it evolves. Uh, but this is a staggering picture, and so what this does is just shows average weekly Connecticut initial unemployment claim. Um, and so what we did here is just did a 12-month view. On average, initial claims usually hover between 3,500 and 4,000, um, average weekly claims per month. And so you can see that spiked on February 20th, um, and then the March is after, uh, the state of emergency was, uh, was issued, was declared. So you see it jumped within a month from just over 4,000, 3,500 to almost 23,000, uh, within that month. Um, and April stats are not yet in, but it's estimated that the weekly initial unemployment claims for the month of April are going to be just below 30,000. Um, and this chart keeps on, keeps on climbing and we don't know, uh, where we go. Um, but the reason I share this is because obviously, um, it has a huge impact, um, on the state. And so, from the state perspective, um, how does all of this impact economic activity, specifically, uh, sales tax revenues, which is a big driver? So obviously, when you have many people unemployed, you have less income earned, uh, which results into less income tax revenue for the state, uh, for withholding. Uh, when the stock market doesn't do very well, a few gains are realized. Uh, with few gains are realized, you have less income in terms of tax revenue. Uh, when we shut down our restaurants and bars for social distancing, obviously restaurants and bars, uh, receive less income, less revenue. Uh, as a result, you know, less sales tax is collected, uh, by the state. And obviously when people are staying home, we're not driving in our cars, we use less gas and less gas taxes collected at the state level. Um, and then compounding that is, I mean, as you've seen, gas prices have actually gone down. So in addition to people driving less and using less gas, even the gas that we do use is at a reduced rate. And so all of those things compound to the revenue collected, um, at the state. Um, and I will share that some of these slides were from presentations I attended from, uh, Pullman and Conley. So some of this information is from them, just to give them their, their credit. Um, this is from the governor's office, that this was issued by the Secretary of Budget on, on Friday. Um, how has this impacted the state financially? So surprisingly, uh, the state actually began the year with one of the higher rainy day fund beginning balances, um, in history. It's not a big number, uh, but it's, it's big, uh, for the state. And they started the year with about 2.5 billion in the rainy day fund, which is about 13% of the general fund revenue. Um, as of Friday, the state is projecting a budget shortfall of about, uh, half a billion dollars. Um, and so they're going to tap, tap into that rainy day fund to make up that deficit. Which would leave that fund, um, at the end of the year with an estimated 1.9 billion. What makes matters worse is that what they're projecting for '21 is a $2.3 billion shortfall, which is more than what they will have at the beginning of the year, um, in their rainy day fund. And therefore at the state level, uh, they have, um, they have quite the challenge to figure out, um, how they do this. Um, other, um, things that are impacting the revenue, obviously corporation business taxes, admission and use taxes, hotel occupancy taxes, petroleum gas receipts, tribal nation gaming payments. All of these things are negatively impacted at the state level because of, uh, the, the, the partial shutdown. And as you know, the state is beginning to gradually reopen, but it is going to take some time before all of these losses are realized, especially at the state level. Uh, best estimates are it will take a good two years to be where we, where we were. And so now I'm kind of starting to look at, at the local picture. And this is where how states, uh, local governments are dependent on the state. And to the extent to which states, we are impacted by, um, decisions at the state level or revenue at the state level. So the, a time chart up top is looking at all of local governments in the state of Connecticut, what their revenue mix is. And therefore, all of the Connecticut, uh, local governments, um, about $10.85 billion we receive from property taxes, all of us combined. Um, other miscellaneous taxes and fees, building permits and those things account for 4%. But you see here, intergovernmental revenue accounts for 26% in aggregate at the state level. The pie chart below shows how we compare with the state average. Therefore, you can see whereas at the state level, towns in general, uh, only 70% of their revenues is from property taxes. In New Canaan, uh, we are at 94%. And so we are somewhat insulated from some of those non-property tax factors that others towns and cities are not. Um, and so on the one hand, uh, our revenue is not as diversified as, as others. In this particular instance, this actually works in our favor. Because had we been more diversified, we would not be as sheltered, um, as we are now because property taxes in New Canaan is fairly stable. Uh, but again, not knowing how this current pandemic is going to impact us. Um, because of the relative wealth of the community, our intergovernmental revenue, the money we get from the state is only 1% of our total revenue. Whereas if you compare in aggregate, intergovernmental revenue accounts for 26% in total of other local governments in the state. And therefore the charts that I just showed before of the lack of revenues and some of the budget challenges that are impacting the state, because it is only 1% of our revenue, we are somewhat insulated from those changes as other communities that have a higher dependency on the state. So this again worked in our favor in this particular, um, instance. And then in our case, um, other revenues accounts for 5%. Those are things like our building permits, our conveyance fees. And our conveyance fees are higher compared to other communities just because of the values of our properties. Conveyance fees is a percentage of your home sales, of your property sales. And therefore because our properties are valued higher and sell for higher prices, our conveyance fee revenue is higher compared to other communities, uh, whose property values are not, um, at our, at our level. So this chart is just to kind of provide some context in how we, um, differ, uh, with, um, how we, how we compare to other, uh, local governments, uh, within, within the state. Um, and this I just included in here because we, we have discussion about debt on the debt level. Uh, we're talking about capital projects that are coming before, uh, before the Board of Finance and the Town Council. And where is our debt level sitting relative, um, to history? So you can see that, uh, we have been doing, uh, a good job of reducing the amount of debts. Overall debt, outstanding general obligation at the town level. Uh, but as you know, we have a number of, of big ticket items, big projects that are being considered. And therefore, um, that will impact, um, this chart moving forward. But it does help that in the past three, four years or so, we have. we have been on the downward trajectory, which gives us a buffer to kind of issue additional debt for some of these new subjects that are coming. As far as fund balance, which is where we're projecting to be, we've began to look at year-end estimates, and I'll be presenting a more detailed year-end operating budget presentation to the Board of Finance and the Town Council in the next couple of weeks. But initially, on the general fund, this is kind of looking at net operating income, the difference between our revenues and expenditure over time. And you recall that we budget, property taxes, again, is our biggest revenue source. We typically budget for a 98.5% collection rate. Our actual collection rate is higher at, in excess of 99%. So in most years, our revenues tend to come in over what we budget. And likewise, on the expense side, our expenditures tend to come in below what we budget initially, just because of the nature of what we do. You know, we budget for a full complement of staff. You know, we have turnover and those types of things. And therefore, those impact our total expenditures. We budget for contingency, and in good years, when we don't have unanticipated expenses, we don't tap into contingency. So usually, the combination of higher revenues than budget and lower expenses than budget give you a positive swing. And in most years, we end up adding to the fund balance as a result of that. So you see that the past two years, actually, in FY '18, because of that swing, we added $2.23 million to the general fund. Last year, that we completed on June 30th, we added about $1.84 in general fund, between a combination of the revenues and expenditures. This year, we have a slight difference. You recall that we budgeted, as we do it every year, we budgeted this year to draw down $3 million. And in most cases, we don't. And therefore, this year, what we're seeing are two things. The over-collection on our revenue side is a result of the 98.5%. That is actually happening on the tax revenues. We are collecting more taxes than we budgeted to collect because of that over-collection and our payment history. What is dragging that revenue down is we have a number of other fairly high revenue sources that are performing below what they typically do. The big one is our building permits. Our building permits typically, this year, we budgeted $900,000, which is down from the prior year budget of about $1 million. But this year, we're actually projecting building permits to come in at $600,000. So about a $300,000 shortfall on the building permit side. And therefore, so that is eating up that over-collection on the property tax side. Additionally, conveyance fees, which is another big-ticket item, which is based on property exchanges, property sales, including refinancing activity, we are projecting now about a $200,000, $250,000 shortfall in that revenue source. And so those two combined add up to about $500,000, $600,000 or so, which is eating up that over-collection that we get on property tax. So in essence, our property, our total revenues is actually going to come in on budget, and not so much on budget as it has been historically, which is a good thing. But we're losing that additional over-collection because that over-collection in tax revenues is having to make up for some of the shortfall in the other spending.
London, there's also another factor in there that, you know, as we've talked about before, we had a budget error in not budgeting for the library's health expenses above.
Yeah, that's coming when I start talking about the spending side.
Yeah, but that chart looks kind of crazy. And it's, it would, had we budgeted for the 440 for two years, the 184 would have gone down by half a million dollars, and the 93 would be up by half a million dollars. So it wouldn't look quite so crazy. I'm not sure what happened before 2016, but it...
Yes and no, Kevin, because the library revenues is not in the general fund. We budgeted that in the Internal Service Fund. So that wouldn't have changed this picture.
Library's revenues. Okay.
Yes, we budgeted for those. So that goes back to the point on the expenditure side. Because we, on the expenditure side, in total, when I said that we typically spend below what we spend, that is actually still happening this year. As Kevin said, because of the closures, we are actually on target to spend less than we budgeted historically. The Board of Finance told us that they're going to come in under budget. Departments are going to come in under budget in a series of line items because we have not been fully operational. However, to Kevin's point, we did, historically, we would typically budget in the Internal Service Fund, a transfer out of the general fund. But for two successive years, we have not budgeted the transfers for the library portion of the health insurance funds, which is about $1 million or so for two years, just under $1 million for two years. So what we're planning to do this year is to make that transfer before year-end so that the Internal Service Fund, which is where we pay our health insurance cost, is whole, and we're not depleting in those funds. And therefore, on the expenditure side, whereas we would have otherwise come close to budget, under budget, because we're now budgeting for an additional $1 million transfer from the general fund into the Internal Service Fund, we are basically eating up that savings that we would otherwise have had on the spending side had we not had to do this transfer. So had we not had to do this transfer, we would have had a net underspend in the general fund of about $1 million. So we would have come out with a balanced budget. Our revenues, even with the shortfalls that we're experiencing, would have come close to balancing our expenditures had we not had to do this additional transfer of that Internal Service Fund. And so because we're doing that, where you're seeing that in this current year, we may see that drawdown in the general fund balance. And so that's why this chart looks the way that it does, because you have two anomalies happening this year. The revenue picture is being absorbed, the tax collections, positive collections are being absorbed by the under-collection in those two other revenue line items. And then the underspend on the operating side is being eaten up by the need to add additional transfers into the General, into the Internal Service Fund. So that's kind of like the net operating income. And then the chart on the left is basically just looking at the fund balance and the ending balance, where we end up being. Even with all of that, we're still looking at an ending balance in the general fund of just under $30 million, $29, $29 million, a little over $29.5 million and some change. These are charts that you've seen in the past, which kind of explain how our makeup is on the grant list. 88% of our grant list is residential properties. Whereas you compare with towns like Darien, Westport, Yvonneage, at 80% of their grant list. If you hit the chart below, commercial and industrial, you know, only 5% of our grant list is commercial and industrial compared to our neighboring towns. And therefore, that just tells you who is responsible for paying the property taxes that we collect. A greater burden of these taxes in Ucanen are borne by residential properties, unlike other communities that have a commercial and an industrial base. And so this goes back, now getting into our local picture, when I said, even with those projections, our ending balance is about $29.5. This is the chart that I shared with the Board of Finance and the Town Council when they were making their decision on the deferral program. So we're going to begin FY '21 with about $29.5 million in fund balance. We anticipate, we know that about 32% of our property taxpayers are escrow. And therefore, those are not impacted by the tax deferral, although there may be unique instances where a homeowner, if they are impacted, they may request that their remittance to the state, to the town does not happen. But we anticipate about $22 million in tax revenues will come in by the due date. And then, because the deferral that was offered by the Town Council is for those that have been impacted by COVID, and so we anticipate that perhaps, again, this is, we've never been here before, and so these are real guesses, that perhaps 25% of property taxpayers will not take advantage of this and will pay as scheduled. So that's about 11.7%. But assuming 73% will, then we will have about $34.3 million not come in July and August as we have in the past, that will come in later in the year in October. And then we typically have about 2% that pay beyond that October date. I don't know how that's going to be this year. It may be 2% or even higher. But for guess purposes, this is kind of what the cash flow picture is. But this estimates that by December 31st, once all of these property taxpayers, either those on deferral, those not on deferral, have made their payment, we will end half of the year at about $69.7 million total revenue collected, including that $30 million in fund balance. So from a cash flow perspective, if this holds true, we should be okay. But we did have the discussion, if it doesn't hold true, we do have other financing options that could be used as such in a short-term measure. And so from this point forward, Kevin wanted me to kind of also have a... Well, before I go into a capital discussion for where we are with FY '20, I would like to interrogate any question that you may have. And I see, Kit, you have your hand up, but you are on mute.
London, could you take the slides down?
Sure.
In terms of where we're hoping to be on December 31, how is that relative to, say, last year?
Let me stop the screen sharing. How is that relative to last year? We're actually not that far off. Last year, we would be about $1 million down because recall, when we ended the year last year, our budget was to draw down expenses by $3 million, our fund balance. We were going to draw down $3 million. Under this scenario, we're drawing down $900,000. So we are $900,000 below. We will end $900,000 below our fund balance than we did at the beginning of the year.
Thank you.
Hey, London, you mentioned the 1% that we get from presumably the state of Connecticut. I'm surprised it's that much. And I think you said it's about $1,380,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, the big chunk is the ECS, Education Cost Sharing, and then the, I forget the name of the other one. It's Ed-related. So we have about $1,300,000 in total, and those are Board of Ed-related expenses that we capture in the general fund. And then we have about $200,000 or so in state pilot revenue from the state, and that's about it.
Thanks.
What was the $200,000? Can I ask?
It is, let me look here.
We actually get the Tahr funds, Town 8 Road.
The Tahr fund, those are actually, we don't put those in the general fund anymore. Those go to the capital fund, so those would not be part of this. We have the excess cost grant from the state, which is a little over $1 million. And then we have...
That's for special ed.
That's for special ed. And then the ECS, Education Cost Sharing Grant, which is about $300,000. And those are the two big ones that go into the general fund. And then we have a small revenue for pilot payment in lieu of taxes on state colleges and properties that we get.
Thank you.
I suggest at this point, since the Board of Finance is going to deal with the capital analysis on Tuesday and also decide how to set the mill rate and how much of the general fund to use for applying to the mill rate. And we really have planned to take no action today. Why don't we suspend the rest of this discussion until we can see what the Board of Finance discussion is on Tuesday? And then, two weeks, we may be wanting to take some action about the rest of May and June, if any, about delaying expenditures or delaying... Again, there's a natural slowdown going on. And on this town, both the Board of Ed and the town side, we're actually saving money in terms of not operating with buildings full. And so, any further questions about London's review at this point?
So the Board of Finance will be discussing fiscal year 1920 with the two months left.
Yeah, and also deciding how much of the general fund balance... They had budgeted for $5 million. There's sentiments from Town Council and others that ought to be more than $5 million. So we'll see what they do on Tuesday to set the mill rate. And they'll have a full discussion on Tuesday night about the, both the capital budget and the, where we are. London will give the same presentation you just gave to the Board of Finance as far as where we stand in 2020.
So capital budget 1920, not 2021?
2020, well, they, you know, they may... My view is, we really needn't talk about 21 until June because we really don't know how things are going to look later this month or even for next year. But other than a few bonded projects, which we have to get resolutions passed by, we're only going to do the East School roof and the, what's the other one, Tiger? For the bond resolution. The bridge, the bridge. The bond resolution will be put off to June. And then the tax-supported capital expenditures will be something we can really talk about in June because most of those don't start in motion until July and August, anyway. So with that, we move to general matters. I have a department managers' meeting scheduled for 10:00. So if you'd be happy to talk about anything you'd like to talk about. We are working with a group of, Bill Walbert and Tucker Murphy have put together to talk about how we get downtown back into action after May 20th, if the governor's going to open up retail and restaurants for outdoor dining. And so we're working on that. What else is topical? Anything you'd like to talk about?
I just want to say that I was at the transfer station on Saturday. I'm always at the transfer station. And the week before, everyone was wearing masks. And this Saturday, maybe because the weather was great and maybe because we're talking about easing, less than half the people were wearing masks. I wonder if there's, if we could put up a sign or something? I know we can't make people wear masks, but it's worrisome.
Well, I think the point is, Kit, that if people cannot stay six feet from others, you know, but when you're driving your car or when you're out on the trails, if you can, you know, not have to approach other people, that the convention is, when people are downtown especially, we expect them to wear masks. And as the May 20th rollout goes, we will expect people to wear masks. In fact, I think it'll be mandated, as they do right now at Acme Supermarket and Stewart's Market, and I think the pharmacies. When you're indoors, you have to wear masks. When you're outdoors and you're not... And you can maintain social distancing, it's not mandatory you wear masks, so...
But I would just say this, and then I'll be quiet, that it's hard, it's wonderful a job at creating or trying to create social distance at the transfer station. There's still, when people are passing in between recycling and garbage, they are closer than six feet. I'm just suggesting that a little reminder might be good because people maybe are feeling more optimistic than they should.
Well, again, I would go back to our numbers. Our numbers, basically, are 150 people. If you compare those statistics to all of our surrounding towns, we have done very well with keeping people safe.
We have.
And I think the protocol about wearing masks in... And I think the protocol about wearing masks in downtown, when you're outdoors and, you know, the transfer station already is separating people by not having every lane used. But Tiger, why don't you talk?
Great job.
I just made a note, we're going to try to, I'll put some additional signage out as you come in, as far as, you know, to try to be your part to maintain social distance. And I'll ask the guys to be a little more diligent. We did, you know, sequester a little bit, but you are right. It's as they get to the railing and then they tend to hang out, which is the problem. You know, I think the problem this weekend too was that it was so nice out. People just dropped their guard a little bit. Heard from a couple of people said, I forgot my mask, you know, I forgot my mask. Well, you know, you got to be diligent, leaving in your car, you know, things of that nature. And I think it's a learning curve.
My point isn't that New Canaan hasn't done a terrific job, but just that if people let their guard down too soon, it may not look so good going forward.
No mask, no trash.
Okay, anything else?
Might be the new sign, Nick.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 10:04.
So moved.
Okay, have a good day. Okay, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Linda.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tiger.
Thank you, Linda. It was good.